Want to welcome everybody out to the Planning and Zoning meeting tonight. To get started, we'll ask Commissioner Ernst to give us, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and state the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joseph. Our first order of business tonight is to accept the minutes from our previous November 1st meeting. Has anybody had a chance to review those? And do I have a motion?
I move we accept the minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting.
Second?
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. That passes. The next order of business is a preliminary plat, the Canyon View Meadows reapproval. Does staff want to go through that?
I'd be happy to. Really straightforward request. This is the Canyon View Meadows subdivision. I think when it first came through for preliminary plat approval, it was Swift Creek, if I recall correctly. The applicant has submitted for the final plats. Unfortunately, though, is in the position where the preliminary plat is approval, is expiring, and so this is coming back before you for a recommendation of reapproval of the preliminary plat so it can continue moving forward.
Plat by right or master plan development?
This is a master plan development, 91 lots. And we just have the recommendation with the findings and conditions as listed.
Does the, do we now require park strip trees? Did we pass that ordinance?
This one actually does have a street tree plan. That was a condition of the original approval.
Okay. So that wouldn't be new for them. And then how about walls? We just standard?
We do have the trail cross-section, which includes the walls.
So there's no changes to it? We just need to reapprove it? Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I think the phasing plan has changed a little bit, but that's it. Nothing that...
Lot sizes, configuration haven't changed. Number of lots hasn't changed.
Precisely, yeah.
Has everybody had a chance to review it? If there's no questions, this is not a public hearing, so we can just go into a motion?
I move the Planning Commission approves the Canyon View Meadows plat. Subject to staff's findings and conditions.
Second?
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay. Motion passes. That is one of the conditions that was, it is not in the conditions.
Yeah. Number two in the conditions.
Oh, red line. Yes, it is. Sorry.
Still good with my motion?
Yeah.
I think it passed.
Yeah, it passed.
Passed, right?
Sure, it passed. And the red lines were included. Findings and conditions were included in the motion. Yes.
And this is administrative, not legislative. Correct? We aren't sending this...
As a master plan development, it would go to the city council.
So our motion wasn't quite right, then?
It was close enough.
Close enough. No. I approved it.
You approved it?
Overstepped our authority completely. I just approved the thing.
I'm okay with that.
I thought so.
It does need to go before the city council.
Sounds good.
So we really moved that?
We recommend.
We recommend it for approval.
That's what we heard.
Yes. Perfect.
That's what we...
I think by our discussion, we have clarified that point.
And now it's in the record, so...
Yep. The next order of business is a public hearing for a couple of Title 15 amendments. Somebody from staff going to walk us through those amendments?
I'd be happy to. We'll start with the first one, which is Title 15 daycare. Do we have the memo that we can pull up for that? This is an application that was made by Jacob Rollins, who is here with us tonight. In my opinion, his request is pretty straightforward. We already have a definition of adult daycare in the city code, but unfortunately, we don't have any zones that it's applied to as a permitted or a conditional use. And so the proposal, we included in the memo, the information provided by the applicant, which was basically to apply it anywhere that we currently have child daycare, which we define as childcare centers. It would add adult daycare as a permitted use in the zones. I also included in your memo, this is a use that the state also regulates, and so that information was included for your review. The zones that would be affected would be the residential office, the commercial office, C1, C2, our shopping center zone, the BP zone, public facility, I1, and the urban village. And the DRC did look at this and recommends approval.
Is the adult daycare, the verbiage the state uses with, you said this is regulated by the state as well?
Yes. And so if we, if the council were to approve this proposal and allow it as a use in those zones, and for instance, if the applicant was to open a facility, he would have to abide with the regulations and rules that the state has in place.
Right. I guess my question is, in numbers, if I'm, and we have childcare centers, that must be a, I'm just wondering if the state verbiage is matching what's the regulation?
Very different uses, very, very different rules and regulations as well.
Okay.
Is there something magical about four hours and not three? They have to, an adult has to be there for four, at least four hours, but not 24 hours?
No.
Okay.
Where's that definition came from?
From the current Spanish Fork city code.
Okay.
I think it's because you have facilities for disabled. Maybe there's some overlap with that.
We were, possibly could be differentiating the two, yeah. I agree.
Is, are you guys, did you guys talk about the time at all? Four hours? What if someone came in and they want to do it? Three-hour blocks? I mean...
That could be considered an outpatient-type facility rather than a daycare.
Got it.
And I think that's the difference.
That makes sense.
And I don't want to suggest that we wouldn't follow the rules and the law pretty tightly, but there are some things like that sometimes that get to be, in a practical sense, pretty hard to keep tabs on. You know, so if occasionally it was less than four hours...
And as long as they're open for four hours a day, and if it's different adults there for, yeah, there's multiple ways of meeting that definition, I think.
I think that's good.
Yeah. Public hearing.
Thank you to the applicant for your service for our community. Greatly needed.
I'm trying to take away from you guys who see your center, I know. Our clients will be attending.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the, anybody from the public to speak on this Title 15? Okay. If not, do they, do they have any other questions? Entertain a motion, then.
The client's adult daycare means no residential care provision for at least four but less than 24 hours per day, that means the needs of action, action, actionally impaired adults through a comprehensive program that provides a variety of health, social, recreational, and related support services in a protected setting. Our definition is a little different than that in our code.
Are you okay with our definition, Anna?
That was our definition there. Maybe...
I'm okay with it. If you're okay with it...
I like it.
Yeah, it's different. And we did ask questions whether during DRC whether this facility would be locked up or not.
Could you speak into the mic? I can't quite hear what you're saying. Thank you.
I thought I was loud enough. Sorry. We did ask questions during DRC whether this facility will be locked up and have patients with mental health issues, whether there's going to be, there's going to be a doctor or a license provider in that facility.
Are those questions more pertinent to a business license, though, than the use? Or is that also...
More pertinent to the use than, than the business license, I believe. Yeah. Because it will affect, it will affect the people, all these, the proposal includes all these zones, different zones, and it will affect residents and other things, other citizens that are around the area.
I'm wondering if we could have the applicant come up and describe, describe more about the adult daycare that he's proposing so we can understand. I mean, I guess if you're asking those kind of questions, then we could...
That's a singular applicant for a...
Right.
A broader title change, so...
Right. But he's in the industry, so we could get an idea of...
That's why we provided the regulations, just to kind of give you a picture of what purview the state looks at these uses.
But this aligns with the state's, the definition here aligns with the state's regulation?
And I'll just add, and I, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but, you know, typically it's an Alzheimer's dementia kind of a, of a diagnosis that leads to the need for, you know, this type of facility.
Some supervision.
Yeah. A certain amount of, is that fair to...
Once a client reaches kind of a certain age where they need more 24/7 care, they're probably...
Could we ask you to just speak from the podium, please? Sorry. Just so it's on the record.
Yeah. I was just saying, it's kind of a niche group where they don't quite need 24/7 care. Once they start getting into, like, severe Alzheimer's where, or, you know, certain other health risks, they would probably not be in an adult daycare facility. They'd be in a nursing home or assisted living, maybe.
So is your primary purpose to provide relief for their caregivers so they can go run errands, have some personal time?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the, the idea. It's either the spouse or the adult children trying to work a job while they watch their parents who are starting to leave the oven on, that type of thing.
Yep.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed changes to Title 15, adult daycare.
I second.
Recommend approval.
Recommend. What did I say?
Approve.
Move to approve?
Yeah.
Recommend approval.
No, we did not hear that.
Okay. I move, okay, I move that we approve the proposed...
Recommend.
Recommend.
Oh, because this goes to city council?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we recommend approval to the city council for the proposed changes to Title 15, Title 15 amendments, adult daycare.
Second?
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for redoing that.
Pleasure.
Okay. The Title 15 amendment for the community development process, just changes to our
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had an opportunity in the work session just a few minutes ago to, at least at a high level, go through all of the changes that are proposed now. So I'm going to kind of stay high level right now. If anybody in the audience wants me to do a deeper dive, I'm happy to do that for anybody that maybe is watching this meeting after the fact. The changes that are going to be discussed now as a part of this meeting can be found on the city's website, attached to the agenda of this meeting. If anybody has questions and they want to get with staff in the community development office to, again, discuss them in more detail, we'd be happy to do that. As I mentioned in the work session also, there really is not a lot of substantive change that's proposed with what's before you tonight. There is quite a bit of information that's being added in an effort simply to make different provisions of Title 15 more clear, certain things where our code is maybe a little bit unique in different ways. For example, by way of what we require of certain types of projects in certain zoning districts, the R4 or R5 zoning district, or a zoning overlay that's called the infill overlay. There are illustrations that are proposed with these changes that are really simply taking existing zoning like, language and putting that in graphic form. Which is not to say that the way things are illustrated with what's proposed tonight would be the only way that something could be done, but it is very representative, in my opinion, of, of a way that a project could be designed to include maybe some of the more unique or more important criteria that we have, again, in different zoning situations. So for example, this image here illustrates some things that are must-haves relative to how a site is designed for what would be a fairly common zone if we're talking about a multifamily development. The next image then takes that down, I would say, in terms of the level of detail to illustrate some things that we have in the ordinance that define different elements that need to be included with buildings that would be constructed in that particular zone as well. Again, not adding new criteria in this regard, just illustrating it. I believe this becomes a really important and helpful tool for us, really at staff level. Probably even more importantly, as we're able to describe things to people that we work with that are contemplating doing projects of this nature in these zoning districts, this type of description of what's expected, I would hope that maybe instead of, I'm going to pull numbers out of the air, but instead of maybe a developer needing to do five different iterations of concept plans before they get something that is in the realm of close to the mark, maybe it's just two. Saving our staff time, applicants' time, applicants' money in terms of the consultants that they employ to put this type of thing together. Really, it's about being as clear as we can be. Again, a lot of things are included with what is presented tonight that are in this, this kind of a realm. And I kind of want to go back, well, yeah, maybe it's better. Let's just touch on the different graphics that we have, and then I'll go back to, to mention particularly two things that really, I think, do have some substantive change. Again, a sample site design, in this case, it's for a fairly unique zoning district that can only be used in certain parts of the community, the R5 zone, the Reese Apartments on the location of the original Reese Elementary School is the only project so far that's been developed in the R5 zone, illustrative of how somebody could meet the site design criteria. Next image illustrative of how somebody could meet the building design criteria for the R5 zone. Maybe continuing on, the next image that we have simply illustrates what the requirements are for, I would say, standard lots in the more frequently found residential zones that we have in the city. So going from the R1-6 zone, generally the, the most dense zone that we have for projects with single-family homes, up to the R1-15 zone, which over the last 20 years probably has been the least dense zone that we have that has been commonly used in the community. The fundamentals, lot width, lot depth, what then the building envelope is, that is where you can build a home, given the setbacks, just another way to illustrate what's found above in the table that we have for our residential development standards. The next graphics that we have, illustrative of how somebody could design projects to meet the basic criteria that we have for infill overlay projects, a couple of different examples there of some of the more common requirements that come into play.
Dave, could we scroll back up to the, there's an infill overlay, that one right there? Is that adding, this is, is that adding two residences to the back?
The top image is three altogether, is the...
So like an existing home in the front and then two residences in back in one building?
As shown.
We had a couple of, just over on Second West?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're almost identical that way out.
Right. I remember that, and that just makes me think about the mailbox change. Anyway, go ahead.
That would be accounted for, well, the mailbox change. I'm going to pause here. I'm trying to think through everything.
I don't, yeah, I don't mean to, because I know that's later in the conversation. I just, just...
But this is not a development.
ADUs.
You would add another mailbox up to the front along the drive.
That's what would happen in this case. That's exactly it.
In this case. In a development, you would, you have a gang box of them.
Right.
Where you don't have the ability to go, you know, 915A over in another section. It has to be in that same box.
And it's conceivable that with an infill...
It's an older area of town.
Right.
Gotcha.
There is that, but also it's conceivable that, and in fact, I'll bet we have gang boxes with some of the infill projects that have been done, where we have, you know, maybe a dozen or 15 units. I can think of a couple of townhome projects where that's probably, you guys...
That one of Jones, up on Fourth, would be...
Exactly. Do they have, did you notice?
I have it certainly.
Yeah, I, I can't think with certainty. And I'm, I'm trying to think if the ADU question would come into play in an infill overlay project. I don't think it would. I don't think they would qualify any of the units here, even the existing house for an ADU. So I think it would be three units and no more. So we would just contemplate making sure there's one mailbox for each unit at the time that this gets approved.
Gotcha.
Hadn't thought about that before.
Anyway, yeah.
Accessory structures, those would be like garages, sheds, maybe like a changing house for a swimming pool, any of that type of a thing. We have criteria that describe where they can be put and how large they can be, both in terms of height and the area that they can cover. These different illustrations simply take existing regulations and put them in graphic form to make it a little bit easier to understand. Accessory dwelling units, there's more than one way to do that, and this image, I think, does a great job in a very succinct way of illustrating what those, those options can be. And certainly, there are many, many different ways that somebody could execute on adding an ADU to a property. I mentioned also in the work session, this is probably something that we'll look to flesh out more as part of an effort that we'll do, I think, in 2024, really to promote the, the use or the addition of more ADUs in the community, really simply as a way to provide more housing, housing that typically is more affordable than some of the other housing that we have in, in, well, on the Wasatch Front. Very helpful image also, in my opinion. And I don't believe that necessarily landscaping requirements for non-residential projects are terribly unique, but they're a little bit different than some other communities. This image does a good job, I think, of, of describing what some of the, the things that are a little bit different than what you might see in, in Payson, for example, relative to what, what we require here in Spanish Fork. And then kind of winding down, you might recall that with the last couple of months, we've talked about some fairly unique situations relative to provisions that allow fencing on properties that either are of a certain size or that are of a certain size and a certain configuration that can be where otherwise in the community it can't be. Really talking about within the front setback of a home. And these two illustrations illustrate, I think, in a fairly precise way, what the code language means in a graphic form. And then lastly, this is simply a much better image illustrating very similarly some things, and it, this actually is a replication of an existing image that we have in Title 15, just looks a lot better. Which is a good time for me also to give Mary Martin credit for all of this. All of this was developed in her office very efficiently from what I was able to observe. It's a great asset to have somebody with that ability and, and just, and skill. I think you'll probably see more of this type of thing in the future. We're looking forward to that. I hope she doesn't hate it because she's going to be asked to do more of it, not less. But in terms of the graphics, that is what's being proposed. Parking and mailboxes, we have language that's proposed. I'm going to, yes, sorry.
Can we go back to the graphic about the, with the sightline at the corner with the trees? I have a friend who was in a car accident several years ago in our community because there wasn't sightlines for that. If our, if there are trees and shrubs and other things that don't meet this requirement, do officers talk to neighbors and say, "This is a danger to tra, a hazard for traffic and such"? Is it something that's addressed?
I'm going to let Jared speak to part of this in just a second, but I know that, at least at some times, we have done that, where we've talked with property owners about, hey, maybe you've put something on a corner that obstructs view somehow. Oftentimes, it is simply landscaping that starts low, gets bigger, and becomes a problem. I know that we, as the city, we routinely inspect to make sure that traffic signs and things like that are visible. Jared, I'd...
We do the signs in the public, right? We do the signs in the public right of ways. If something's reported to us, then we'll send the code enforcement officer out there and he'll take care of it. But other than that, we, I don't know if we police and drive the streets, but once we, once we've noticed it, we'll take care of it.
Like, we'll, we'll remove limbs from trees. Sometimes we've had to remove trees, different things like that, if they're obstruction.
Yeah, we've cut trees right down to the, right to the ground.
We've removed trees.
Well, that's great. I, yeah, I, someone like me doesn't think that much about it until I have a friend who has lasting health problems because of something that seems minor like this, so...
Honestly, the driveway, one, kids get ran over. And when you have a fence right up against a driveway that makes it really hard to see what's going on in a sidewalk behind you, and drivers, I think, doing their best to be safe can end up in really bad situations. So my, that's, that's certainly a critical one as well. That one can be hard to police also. It's a part of the reason that we want people to get fence permits, so that they don't put fences where they don't belong. It's easier to, to prevent their installation than it is to get them to, to conform after the fact. Incidentally, we don't charge anything for fence permits. We welcome the applications. We can talk through things and usually come up with something that works for people, but yeah, anyway.
Thank you.
The parking regulations, we're trying simply to add provisions that, that give the city more latitude and justification than we have currently to disallow parking where we think it's problematic. And that, I'm not trying to be overly vague, but that really is the best way that I can put it. So that might mean not allowing a developer to, at least for purposes of meeting parking requirements, to have parking in dark alleyways, alleyways that maybe are secluded from view. Maybe it's, it's because it is an alleyway... Maybe it's, it's because it is an alleyway that doesn't have adjacency to like a public street or a driveway, or that's not visible from a bigger parking lot, or maybe that isn't within line of sight of a door to a building or a business. Really trying to limit parking in secluded areas. Secluded areas by and large being a concern from an urban design perspective for a bunch of different reasons. And also giving the city the ability to, at least potentially, address problems that might arise when required parking is not available for customers. Regardless of what it is maybe that, that causes that, we're trying to touch on some of the things that we found are the most common obstacles. The big sea land containers that end up being placed on a dozen parking spaces in a parking lot, shopping center, that type of a thing, or in almost, on a permanent basis, parking spaces being occupied by material that's there for display and sale, or maybe just storage and the like. And I'm not saying I believe we have a big problem with that today, but should it arise, we'd like to be prepared rather than to, to have to react, excuse me, react at that point in time.
So Dave, like, we had Lowe's come before us a couple of years ago. And request to be able to put material there on the side.
Yep.
That was, at the time, required parking. It's not ever used for parking. They have plenty of parking for the needs of the store. But that was them, they didn't need to by our old, old code. And now this would be saying that, that would not be allowed unless they had a variance or some sort of agreement like that from the city?
You know, I think the only way it would be using probably our development enhancement overlay. You know, as a way to say, hey, you might have, and again, just to illustrate, throw some numbers out there, let's say that Lowe's was required to have 300 parking spaces. And let's say that they had 330, but they wanted essentially on a permanent basis to cover 50 of those.
Mm-hmm.
You know, with their, maybe, you know, landscaping materials and that type of things, garden center types of things. So they'd be 20 under the requirement at that point. I think today, their only option would be to have that same kind of conversation with the city by way of, we need a special approval to be able to, you know, use this space that otherwise would be parking in that way. So there would be a way still to have that conversation and to work those things out. But in the inverse, let's say that, and I'll just say Lowe's, not really talking about Lowe's, but let's say that they were required to have 330 spaces. And we have found that on a regular basis, all of that parking is needed. And then they, in one way or another, make 50 parking spaces unusable. And it maybe creates a problem for other businesses in a development or in a neighborhood, or problems with parking on streets and that type of a thing. Having this language in the code would give us some ability to take, I would say, more ability than we have today, to have some recourse there and to try to get that situation improved. That's really what we're trying to do here. We talked about mailboxes for new subdivisions, the big gang boxes, and simply a provision that makes it so that as people add accessory dwelling units on lots in that subdivision, we have space in those big boxes for all of the units in the neighborhood. I, this is not just a guess, and I'll use a range, it's something between $30 and $50 by the time you account for pouring the concrete pad that the gang boxes are installed on, buying the boxes, which are anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 apiece, cost of installation and things like that, it's maybe $30 to $50 per box, which is not free. But in our view as staff, that's a great investment to make at that point in time versus what somebody would have to go through down the road to retrofit to be able to accommodate. What we're finding both landlords and tenants really want. They do not want post office boxes, which is what we've tried to steer people to do. We've had significant pushback, continue to get that. And the other option would be, hey, just have both residents mail sent to the same address and sort it out. People don't like that. So here we are. And this, this is proposed tonight as the result of more than a few conversations we've had with, again, both tenant and landlord and with the postal service, to understand what, what they expect. And there are some genuine challenges that come into play after the fact that this will not address for what's been built to date, but going forward, it'll help make it a non-issue. So. Hate to do, you know, a page by page dive, but I'm happy to if you guys want to. So that's my, my summary of the things that I think are the most relevant and happy to take any questions.
I think we've already reviewed it, and I think as far as I'm concerned, you hit the points that were of interest or weren't just simple grammatical changes. Does anybody have any questions for Dave or for staff? This, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to public hearing. Does, is anybody here to have any questions or speak on any of these matters? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. If there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend approval of the, of the construction standards revision.
No, Title 15.
You can do the construction standards too, but.
Oh, oh, I, oh, excuse me. Well, let's do the other one.
I can jump ahead too.
I, in, okay, so I will make the motion, I move that we recommend to the city council that the Title 15 amendments, the community development updates and amendments be approved under Title 15.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, what was that, Anna?
Can you please verify your motion because it said, "I recommend approval and then approved at the end." So please verify the motion.
Would you like me to restate it?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that we recommend to the city council that the Title 15 amendments concerning community development and updates and amendments to the municipal code, Title 15, be approved by the city council.
You're recommending it for approval?
We are recommending that we approve.
Okay.
Or that they approve.
They.
Yeah, that they approve.
With that recommendation, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go before the city council. Jared didn't get out of his presentation. We're hoping there for a minute he might. The next most, order of business is the construction standards, a public hearing on revisions to our construction standards.
Okay, we just got a few revisions or more housekeeping cleanup revisions. Some modify just the design requirements in the general section. We've had a street sign section to it, masonry graffiti section, the secondary junction pedestal for the SFCN. I'll go through that one and then the two-inch pressurized irrigation. So if you just go to the first one, you can see they're just cleanups where the construction that impacts public streets and traffic. We took out the city engineer and put the city surveyor in for the survey monuments. We removed this section, and it's just, it's, it's just a double where it's, so it's already in here. And then we added this street signs, all street signs shall have, or shall be, JSF Technologies Solar Pounder. So it's a new street sign that's coming out. So we've updated our standard to actually call that out, so that's the ones that we'll use to install. Graffiti protection shall be applied to all the masonry walls and buildings. We've added this to the standard, so it helps with graffiti. We get a lot of graffiti, so if we put that on, then we can clean the walls off the.
Have we been doing that?
Mm-hmm. We've been doing it for a while, but some of the walls get hit. We've, we've actually added this to all the masonry walls in town. So now, once they get graffiti, they're easier to clean up.
Jared, is that a period right there?
Yeah, it's a comma.
It's a comma? I can't, I can't tell.
It's a period. The street signs one?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, it's a period.
Is this grammar? Just quick, housekeeping?
I got, there's some grammar corrections that.
Okay, I won't point any more out then.
Anna already did, what, that's like a three-page email?
I only noticed one, Jared. That's the only one I noticed for what's.
I noticed it when I was sitting over there too, and I tried to change it, but I can't, so.
Gotcha.
But it's a, it's a comma.
The last one, is that costco shoe and queen, they all fired, maybe.
I can't hear Anna.
Say that again, we can't.
That's a product.
Costco shoe and queen, I don't, I don't understand this myself. Is that the material that they have or?
This is the actual material they have to use, yes.
Yeah.
So they're, that's the material we require that they use.
The main document material?
Yep.
It's the product.
It's the product, it's the name, it's what you buy.
Well, if you have to have the whole name of the product in there, you have to have the whole name, right?
It's the na, it's the name of the product, so. If you can go to the next one, what would be. This right here is easy. We require concrete around all our electrical boxes. We're just going to include that around our SFCN pedestals too, so. Next one. This is just an update to the two-inch pressurized irrigation meter. And all it is, is it's calling out new specified, better parts and the equipment used to actually put the meter in. So, that's good. And then, we have to go to the other memo now, next memo. We actually have two memos on this. The next one modifies the road closure requirements, adding inspection, an inspection section under for parks and recreation and sprinklers, adding a Strel striping standard, a mailbox concrete apron standard, and a defective concrete placement standard, and a ribbon road standard. So I'll go through them. So the first one is, is we're going to require that a road closure fee shall apply until the road is completely paved, restored to the original condition, and traffic is open. So there's been debate on what is considered open when it comes to a road, and I don't consider plating the road or just having it gravel as a road open. So we will apply our road closure fees until it's paved, restored to the original condition, then open.
Thank you.
We've tried to do that this year, but we didn't have it clarified.
Will there be some conditions like weather or season or?
If you close a road, you pay the fee.
That's got to be finished.
Yep.
Okay.
This is inspections on all our sprinkler irrigation systems shall be done by the assistant director over parks and open spaces or is designated. All inspections shall be done by the appointment, only within a 24-hour notice. Items buried without city approval shall be re-examined by the permittee, so they can be inspected.
This is residential uses also?
No, this is just our parks.
Instruction.
This is anything that's our landscaping and our right of way, in our parks, anything like that, so. We actually have that on all our utilities too, so. If somebody buries one of our utility lines, they have to dig it back up so we can see it. So, next. This is the asphalt trail striping standard that we've created, five-foot lengths, 15-foot spacing, and centered on the trail. I mean, you'd think that'd be simple, but there's a lot of trails that are misparked. So we've actually got a standard so people can follow it, so they look decent. So, next. And then this, if you've ever been to a community mailbox, a lot of them just turn into mud pits because there's no concrete around them. So we've created a standard that this concrete apron will be placed around all concrete, or all community mailboxes. So. And then the next one, this is just a standard that shows that when we do our final walkthroughs for development to put them into one-year warranty and at one-year warranty, any of these spalling or cracking in the sidewalks will have to be replaced with the development. So this just identifies what that cracking is, like quarter inch deep, the spalding, the honeycomb, everything like that. So we have a standard that we can show them that we're going to make you tear it out if it, if it's defective. And then this is the ribbon road, and we've got a standard for ribbon road because we've not had one in the past, but every now and then outside of developments, we're requiring a ribbon road to be repl, to be placed, and so we've created a standard for that. And this is usually off-site, so it's not inside a development. This will be used for out, off-site.
Can you explain what a ribbon road is?
A ribbon road is just a road that has asphalt with shoulders. There's no curb and gutter. There's no utilities usually with it, and there's no storm drainage, it's just a road. The road that goes from Canyon Creek all the way out to Suntan area or to Springville, that would be considered a ribbon road. And then development comes in and develops the road as they come in. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Good.
This is also a public hearing, so I'll open up public hearing if there's anybody here to comment on it. Seeing none, I'll close it. Any further questions for Jared or for staff? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, without messing it up, I hope, to make the recommendation to the city council for their approval of the construction standards revision, proposed amendment, proposed amendments to the construction standard.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will go before the city council. Our next topic is a discussion. If there's anything, we're not making a motion on anything tonight, or we were just hearing a concept, getting feedback on a proposed concept of a development.
Yes, exactly. And I just talked with Mary and Brandon, I hope they, they jump in and speak up. We have the applicants with us tonight as well. There's no better time than tonight to be heard. And just to kind of set the stage a little bit, we'll look at a specific concept that frankly does not work. So we're mostly interested tonight in getting your feedback on the part that doesn't work to try to gauge how strongly you feel about coming up with one way, when I say it doesn't work, I mean from a zoning regulatory perspective, more particularly, it's a setback requirement that we have. Does that make sense? So wanting, wanting you to basically say, hey, we think this is worth pursuing or not. Right now, it's been this way for a while, we have differing setback requirements when commercial developments abut a property that is zone residential or being used residential than when we have a commercial project next to a property that is not being used residentially or is not zoned for residential uses. The setback when it's a commercial use next to a residential use or zone is greater than it is when there are two commercial sites next to one another. Does that make sense? And the range in this case, and we could probably look at it a couple of different ways, but it goes from no setback required to where you could build a building right on the property line, if it's commercial next to commercial, to requiring a 20 or 25-foot setback, depending on the exact situation. In this case, having more than what is illustrated here, and I should set the stage a little bit better. By, try this little one. by, try this little one.
By stating the current zoning to the east and north of it, and then what the general plan designates for it as well. I would, I would do that.
So for starter, yeah, there we go. Thanks, Mary. So this is South Lane, this is Volunteer Drive, this is Main Street, Spanish Fork River. So we're talking about this site right here, which is next to the River Bridge Event Center there. Does that work orientation-wise?
Blue is mixed use?
Blue is mixed use, and this is the general plan.
Which, just a side note, there were a few members of the DRC that had a little concern with the idea that potentially the designation would allow for additional housing to be developed in the triangle area.
That should definitely be considered. I agree.
So general plan, mixed use, zoning, commercial, and one of our mixed-use zones, potentially a residential office zone that would allow for either residential or some non-residential uses. And there is a home on the adjacent property as well, so both, you could argue at least zoned for residential use and being used residentially, which are two triggers that we have in zoning text today, which would require a greater setback along that particular property line. Would we say 20 or 25 feet? Would we call that?
If it's a side, it'd be 20. If it was considered the rear, it'd be 25.
I think we have some latitude there, probably, by way of how that would be defined. Maybe back to the concept plan. Five feet, this is drawn to. So this, this shows a five-foot setback. And with a site that would, would share an entrance, existing entrance to the event center, it lays out pretty much ideally to get the depth of building that the applicants are after, and, you know, very efficient use of the site in terms of meeting parking stall depth, drive aisle depth, and et cetera, over to their, their southern boundary line there. The idea of having a greater setback between uses that sometimes are less compatible than maybe some other uses would be, I think makes a lot of sense. And this is not the first time we've, we've had issues that have arisen in Spanish Fork about recognizing the value of having that range of setbacks, depending on the context, but balancing that with what we think the future's going to bring. And that's really why I think there's, particularly in this case, merit for a conversation about an area that really has started to change, and that I think more likely than not, without having any ability to predict, you know, when or how things would continue to change. But I think it's more likely than not that this property does not end up supporting additional residential uses. I think frankly that eventually it is used non-residentially. So, for example, if, if that were the case today, then as shown, this works. So part of the question is, should we maybe build something into the code to allow for some more leeway for an area where there's at least some speculation on the idea that, you know, change is, is in the air? And maybe I'll just finish a couple of thoughts.
You asked a question, but I, I'll just be quiet, because I won't answer your question.
I'll circle back. But just to maybe spit out a couple of, of finishing thoughts. And thanks, Commissioner Ernest. Maybe I'll stop right now, because I totally lost my train of thought.
You were talking about, should we add something into the code?
Yeah.
That addresses this.
Yeah, that, in, I'd say a lot of times, just allows for some more latitude, some additional way to look at a situation, to consider something like this. What am I missing, in terms of maybe things that are worth considering, maybe before?
You addressed this setback. What is this setback?
That would be, need to be addressed as well. It's currently drawn at 10.
And are these residentials, residential uses here?
Yes.
Residents have been there for my entire life.
But zone commercial, so non-conforming residential uses.
Yeah. But the trigger for the code is either the zone or the use, both necessitate the...
As it should be. I think that's what should be.
So as far as adding, I don't know if this is the direction you're thinking, but when the DRC discussed it, there was some concern with changing the code and doing away with it completely. So then the idea was, should there be, as Commissioner, or not Commissioner, Director Anderson was saying, some exceptions or latitude granted in certain circumstances, and so... Because what the space is used for is, you also have the setback, but then there's also a buffer that applies. And so in, in the landscaping section, we also have a landscape buffer in addition to the wall, in addition to the setback area. And so the idea was, where this situation in some ways is unique, in other ways it's not, but the DRC liked to focus on the idea that the existing home is over 100 feet away, if I remember correctly.
Which is maybe another consideration, but yeah, that's...
The one to the north, the one up on this lot. Because this, that is 100 feet away.
Yeah, the one to the north is what was focused on. Yeah, that's the Hanks. No, the Hanks is the one to the south.
Shepherd's.
Yeah. And so the DRC kind of focused on a number of issues, which is, one, do we need to revisit the general plan designation, or revisit the zoning, or revisit the code? And I, I think the consensus was, they would love to hear the planning commission members' opinions on, on some of those items.
I want to point out a couple of other things, that I'm happy to answer any questions they have. And then I think it's really important maybe to, not maybe, but to let the applicants maybe describe more about what they want to do. But again, I appreciate Mary putting some things together, trying to think about some other situations that we have in the community that maybe help illustrate what could happen here, and I'll let you maybe go through. So, yeah, let's start here and go back. So this is the, I think it's called the Maple Leaf, it's the Italian place. This is from the street on the south side, where a greater setback was required because it's next to a residential use there. So this is very indicative of what would happen.
The trees are smart, too.
And among other things, it does allow for more space for that. For better or worse, this is space that can't be used. Commissioner Menon, I'll thank you. We didn't quite make it, sorry. This project is adjacent on its west boundary to a residential use, and on its north boundary to a non-residential use. This, I think, is five and five. We're kind of guessing, Mary. So you can see how tight that is. It's a pretty efficient use of land, though, in an area where land's finite everywhere, but, you know, particularly it's in high demand. Again, just to try to describe things, and then some imagery that Mary put together that kind of looks at what the future could bring for the site. This would be, you know, should, as we're seeing with the development of this site, maybe the building being located on the property line, with the building in the future being located, or is that inverse?
Yeah, so opposite of that. So the building on the site to the north would be on the property line, and then the building on the site that we're talking about would be, would have a five-foot setback. And then the next image would be five foot on both properties, to get a little bit more space between. And then the last one would be, the property to the north would have a building on its property line, and then the building on this site would be pushed back 25 feet from the property line.
I would use this image to kind of describe one reason that I think there's some merit to the conversation, at least. When the property to the north develops, if this property, the subject site that we're talking about tonight, is not being used residentially, like today it's not, today it's zoned commercially, should the zoning be changed on this site and the use converted, then they could go to zero. So, you know, in my mind, that is almost an equity issue, or at least from an urban design kind of perspective. And I just throw that out as a question even, you know, should that, that weigh into what happens here when, you know, simple act at some point in the future on the, the other side could swing a pretty dramatic change? Let me mention as well, that I'm familiar at least with one property in Spanish Fork, where we anticipated a change of use from residential to commercial close to 15 years ago now, and it just didn't happen, still hasn't happened. And in that case, we did not require a greater setback, did not require a wall and landscaping and that type of a thing. And I know the folks that live in that home, that still is a home, resented tremendously, and I wish that the city would have dealt with that differently, so. That's one case. I do appreciate what Brandon noticed and has mentioned, which is that in this case, at least the residents there, the dwelling, is not in, you know, typically what I'd consider to be close proximity to the property line. That might factor into a, a language kind of option, but those are some things that we throw out, just maybe as like food for thought. I will say this, that a big part of why I want to have this conversation with you is that I think the idea of having this property develop in such a way that there can be, and you guys can speak to this better than I can, but there could be cross-access and cross-parking with the event center. I think that could be very good for everybody. And I think this could continue a trend that started to happen on Main Street, which is a positive transformation from a land use perspective, something that's needed. So merit to the idea. We have a code hang up. That's what we want to talk about, and...
Does the code not allow the planning commission and city council to provide a variance to the setback? The code does not allow for that? That, that's surprising.
Currently, no.
Something like that might be a solution, if that's something you want us to pursue. Brandon had, I think, some good ideas relative to what some language might look like that would help us address this situation without carte blanche, changing things everywhere.
I think you treat it almost like a CUP, and you do it on a case-by-case basis. And when something like this arises, already all of us are thinking through the proximity to the potential other uses around it, but also we start thinking about building heights. So if we are going to grant a variance of building setbacks, we're already thinking about, well, how, how high is that building? And how high will other buildings be around it? We'll just mitigate uses and make sure everyone's playing nice together on a case-by-case basis, almost like a CUP is the way I envision it. I'm a little bit surprised that the code doesn't allow the planning commission and city council to analyze it on a case-by-case basis, if there's merit, if staff feels that there's merit, some sort of hardship, some sort of compelling reason that we should analyze it, analyze this project, and that they, maybe we should consider that they don't need to comply with the building setback. Otherwise, I, I wouldn't just open up the floodgates to everybody.
But is your compelling reason that the developer doesn't get enough square footage to accommodate what they want? I mean, because this, this could fit with the setbacks they want, and just remove some of the buildings.
And that on the streets.
And I get really weary about...
I've thought about that, too.
Pretty subjective, right, the way...
Can you tell us what CUP is?
Conditional use permit, where the city has authority to
Right.
provide conditions, height conditions, other setbacks, other landscaping. We would have the right to say, hey, five's not good, but 10 is okay, as long as you provide trees that have a, you know...
Or you're not so high, or something like that.
You, you just get a lot of discretion, which is what this kind of thing needs.
Yeah. I knew what conditional use permit was, I just wasn't getting the CUP part.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, I'm weary about making changes to something on potential future uses of land when you have residents who've lived in that area for a long time that may or may, I don't know if they're for or against this, I have no idea. But it impacts them, and you, they may be in those homes for another 30 years. Or, or they may, they may have other people they sell that are, to go into them and keep them as a single-family home for longer than that, or it might be sold tomorrow. And somebody comes in, wants to put an office building there. I just don't know how we get into forecasting that.
Well, and Dave mentioned it, too, another thought that I'm a little bit leery of is if we do this here, the development to the north is gonna get it. Whatever we do here, they're gonna get it. It would be, it'd be really hard to say no to.
And on candor.
But it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's on Main Street, right? This is a case-by-case basis. It's on Main Street, one of the heavily trafficked areas in the city, where retail probably should go. Maybe even stacked flats, right in that, to the north of it, so they can walk over there and shop there. Or a restaurant.
Part of what, what I feel like really leads to merit here, to what you just said a minute ago, is that if somebody made application tomorrow to change the zoning and the use of the property of the, on the nor, to the north, to some commercial use, our staff would support that. If it met our criteria, it'd be consistent with the, it's not, well, it's zoned.
RO. But it's mixed-use general plan, so for sure.
Well, RO would allow for an office building.
Yeah, but...
As well as a residential use.
Yeah, I agree. I hope you would support a commercial use there.
Exactly, right. So that's part of, in this case, what I think does make it a little bit distinct from some other situations, to where if that were to happen before this property developed, then this design that we're seeing here has no problem. To, I think Chairman Mitchell's point, who knows if that happens, though, or when it happens? And, you know, there's no way we can speculate on that. However, I would say this is in the path of development and change, so.
Another...
But...
If you're going across the street, I mean, it's gonna happen. You, you see it going that way, but I don't know if we're guiding development, we're not predicting development.
That's kind of my thought, too, and if something like this, like, I feel like I want to help with protecting residential uses, so is there a way to appro, to approve one thing and also make it friendly to the backdoor neighbors?
Why don't we have the usual, do the applicants want to come up and give us some of your insights? We'd appreciate that.
Okay, so as far as the...
Can you say your name and?
Lacy Hill.
And come up and, we really need to hear you in the mic.
Not here, sorry. Uh, Lacy...
It's also for, it's being recorded.
Lacy Hill.
Shay Nelson.
So, um, the two homes to the east actually shut, so River Bridge Event Center does own one of those properties. She rents it out. And then the other home, we're aware of, is the Hanks's home. And they're happy to stay there. They've also said to Ashley, you know, at many points, make us an offer as well. But I think they'll stay there as long as, as they wish, you know, they're not, they don't mind the development, the building. As far as the home to the north, they're pretty set far back north. There is a wide field in between the home and the property and where the setback would be. But I've not spoken to them personally. So I'm not sure their feelings on, you know, having another building there. They are right on Main Street, they are next to another commercial property. They're getting a giant commercial rec center across the street. So I think they're probably fairly okay with it. But I am happy to speak with them.
To, to address...
I think they were in favor of it zoned commercial, correct? You guys recall, they were in front of us not that long ago in favor of their residences being zoned commercial. Is that correct?
That was the Shepherd's that were here.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not nothing. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, even if this setback is 20 feet, we're not losing a lot of building space, we're losing parking. And we're, we have in our contract a shared parking with River Bridge, so it helps alleviate some other issues with the city with parking with them.
It also helps for future businesses coming in and leasing from us, allowing what businesses go in to what permits you're going to allow because they have parking for their businesses. So that's something to think about, as well as looking at that property from 7th to 8th North, that big wide alleyway behind there. I can tell you, it just collects garbage. So it's, that's not something we want. We would want it concrete, nice, up to the fence, kept clean. Not a place for people to be riffraff or coming off the trail, garbage, junk, whatever.
And we're respectful towards residents. We understand if somebody's home, we don't know if they're gonna sell it or not. But there is a field there, and whether it's five feet or 20 feet, our biggest concern is down the road. If they do, they're still gonna have a building next door to them, right? Through their, they're not gonna notice if it's five feet or 20 feet to them, I would assume. The problem is, is if it's commercial and somebody else comes there, then you've got this wide gap for garbage, weeds, homeless.
Have, have you considered going to the neighbors to the north and asking them to rezone their property to commercial?
Brandon, last week, we mentioned that, and I'm, I'm happy to go speak with them and see kind of their feelings, if they've had any input or thoughts.
That's a typical first step.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rather than asking for the variance.
Ashley had already spoken to them.
Okay.
So, so we're just in the process of buying this from Ashley, so that was.
Taking over her due diligence that she's already.
That was all of her due diligence, and we're kind of beginning our own. So, yeah, and I'm going off of what she's spoken with, but I'm happy to personally go talk to them, gain my own perspective.
And if they're in favor of it, it's something that you could represent them here. And you could run, as long as they sign the applications, it's something you could do for them.
Yeah.
As long as they're in favor of it, you could represent them.
And I, I posed that question last week, you know, what, what do you guys project happening there? And I know we, we can't all foresee the future, but in all of what's going on there, with South Lane being blocked off, with Voluntar Drive coming in, we both actually live right in that area. Sun Rock is actually my backyard. I, I had no neighbors for all those years, so I have all those new developments going in. So, I, I mean, I'm all for it, but, you know, it's kind of, you're just in hopes of like, what can we make work for everybody, so. Any other questions for us? Okay.
How many tenants are you anticipating if it were to go through?
We will owner occupy two ends, so she will be in a space, I will be in a space with both of our businesses.
Which are?
She has an aesthetic spa, and I'm a caterer. So, that's how I know, Ashley. And then, we're hoping, this is just our first concept, it's going to, it's going to vary a little bit. We would like to get at least four extra spaces if possible, but it's going to depend on how that final layout works.
In between, so right now, you're showing five, you'd like to at least have a minimum of four.
Yeah, if we could, yeah.
I like the idea of approaching the neighbor and to see if they will submit a, what is it, a rezoning application with you? Like, or include their property in that rezoning?
The cross-parking, I think, is appealing. If there's a possible, I don't know why, if we can pull this building to meet our code at 25 feet, and then work out the cross-parking, I'm, I like cross-parking ideas, and with the event center next door, I assume you guys would be.
We kind of have to have that cross-parking anyway, because we have a recorded entrance that we share. So, we kind of have to allow for one another.
Sure.
And have very differing hours of operation too.
So, because of that, I like that, it's utilized in the parking lot during the solar times on each, for each business.
Yeah.
If that could meet the parking count, I'd be, I like those ideas when we can benefit that way.
And another.
I do think though, I do think a neighbor would notice this structure, I'm assuming it's a single-story.
It is.
I would notice the difference between five feet and 25 feet and not be happy. I think most people would, and be more comfortable with a further setback. From a residential to this application, like Joseph has brought up in Shawna, if that was a commercial or a zone commercial, or, or that, that changes the story. But I think that's a pretty noticeable difference, and it impacts there a lot.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, one of the things that we discussed is, you know, maybe it, it needs to be more than five, but not 25. I think Brandon
Yeah.
Mentioned that it's very common for us to require 10. And 10 for me is a fairly magic number, because with 10, you can fit what eventually become pretty substantive trees in the space. Kind of like that one image that we looked at from 7th North. That really does, over time, create a good screen buffer.
And this would be a similar situation, because it is currently residential, there would have to be a masonry wall there.
And that's what I was thinking of, is if you're going to go 10, I would consider an eight-foot masonry wall, potentially, if the residences wanted it, because that would further mitigate the use types. But I also wouldn't be in favor of it if we think eight-foot masonry, which would mitigate the uses, but the residences didn't want it. So, that, I would be interested in their feedback on that. But I would be in favor of less than 20 or less than 25 with a higher masonry wall.
Why would they not want that?
If they want someone to offer to buy it.
I don't know, people, you know, you never know.
Yeah, I don't know.
The idea of the zoning changing on the property to the north, that would not be hard to make happen from the city's perspective. I, I think, I'd speculate that the city council probably would be warm to the idea. It would make the existing uses there non-conforming, which may or may not be a concern for the property owners there. If that were to happen, we still would have an adjustment that we need to make, because right now, the code says zoning and use. I think at that point, making the adjustment to address the use part probably becomes more palatable.
What do you mean zoning and use? I'm not following you.
The setbacks are required, we don't have that option to be.
But when. But when commercial abuts commercial, it's zero, right? Or five for a building?
The greater setback kicks in if there's a residence on the property, regardless of the zoning, or if the property's vacant and it's zoned residential. And so, in this case, it's both, it has a residence and its own residential office.
Right, but if it was zoned commercial, it would be irrelevant, correct?
Because the code still reads use or zone.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Use as residential.
You're right, you're right. Sure makes it easier, though.
I think it makes it easier.
I do, I do too.
I just.
I get what you're saying.
But it'll muddy the water, but that would still need to be addressed. I think we could do that pretty easily.
It's also, it's the back of a retail building, it's not, it's not the car, their cars aren't going by, whatever's going to the north. There's, there's a lot of favorable things to it.
Which is why, long-term, I almost, like, just thinking from the greedy efficiency kind of perspective, having, you know, maybe 400 feet of, maybe 15 feet of, you know, unused space, really. Unused, except maybe for an aesthetic purpose, which still could be important. That's not the best for our Main Street.
It's not ideal.
Frontage.
Especially when it's, well, we don't know what's going to go to the north or what the layout's going to be, but hopefully, commercial. But it, it's possible to be the back of other multi-tenant strip retail.
Exactly.
Abutting in the back of theirs, and that would be perfect.
That's what we're trying to illustrate with the imagery we put together, so.
Which is also why, if we somehow can eke out in the code some sort of CUP type of, type of language, we could then require certain site layouts of the neighbor to the north when they come to us. I think it needs to be a case-by-case basis. I'm actually surprised we don't have the tools to provide that variance already.
It can become really subjective.
It, well, it is.
That's the.
It is subjective.
That's the problem.
Need to look at it, or ideally, you're looking at it taking the exact context of a situation into consideration and making the best decision for that case versus citywide, but of course.
But you don't want it, yeah.
We just did that for the adult daycare. It wasn't for that applicant. We changed the title broadly, not to focus on that one business.
To speak on that, when you guys had a couple of questions, in an acute care facility, the insurances for those patrons will require certain things. So, how they were speaking to like mental illness patients, or people escaping, or, you know, worrying about your residential spaces, those acute care facilities will require certain mandates on their building, so that will help, just so you know.
Right, for regulations, yeah.
Thank you. I guess my question kind of goes back to the last thing you were, this last part of the conversation is, I'm just always asking when we're making changes, are we hurdling our general plan update in this situation? And to me, this, this makes sense, because it, it all makes sense for what is in that area and what it looks like generally. But are we making decisions for, you know?
I get you, in this case, probably not, but the next case?
Well, and that's why I don't want the code changed in a broad manner.
Yeah, we get that we're number one coming in. We're the first one, we're taking it, we get it.
And trailblazers get, we're going to get some scrutiny on it, so, yeah.
Yep.
But boy, that, what.
We're here for it.
Your plan marries so well with your neighbor.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Which isn't, I mean, that's been a really nice asset to the community down there.
Right.
And our building is beautiful.
That could use more parking.
It could, some more parking.
For helping with that.
Our building is beautiful.
And an extra 15 feet would be great.
The row of parking, that literally is what we're talking about.
That is.
No, I understand that.
Right.
And I, I mean, from a residence, I get it. I mean, the city came in to my area about three years ago, I live on Quell Run Road, off Arrowhead, and they brought all the city power in. And so, I, I had to kind of allow to work with that, to have power poles come down. So, I get it, we all kind of have to work together, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, what, what feedback, I mean, I feel like we've talked about, so what?
I've been making.
Next steps for applicants or whatever.
I have feedback for.
I've been making a list as each commissioner has been talking, but I'd love to hear anything additional. I could read off what I've written down, so we don't restate, or if you want to just.
So, a couple of comments from me. I like the idea of this development overall, as a, as a concept in this area. I think it's great. I, there are a few concerns I have with the setback being on both the back, the north side and the east side. That would be a concern of mine, that I, I feel like we need to find some tool to get, to not get around it, that's the wrong word, to work with that, or to find something that would.
Protect the neighbors.
Yeah. Help protect what we need to protect of the residents there, and, and the few cities interest in, in the concepts or the ideas that Dave's expressed. I'm, I'm all, wherever we can have uses that are symbiotic, so we have like this cross-parking, I like that idea. I think that would help out here a lot. I do think it'd be really interesting to see a little bit more of some elevations of the building, and some of like the landscaping plans that would be happening to help soften up what I'm picturing. Those, that building look, looking like, to know what is going to be going in that area. I do, does, does anybody have a concern with both these facilities using one approach onto Main? You have, you have one, you have one path of egress out of this little development, coming through the, the event center's parking lot to get out.
It's the U dot recorded access, so.
But is that, that happens, and often times, we have to make weird.
Have to.
The event center has a east.
But they're coming out of one, then they'd have to go either way.
Yes, that's right.
On, you're, you're talking on the north concept.
Yes.
With the single approach, okay.
I think generally, because the hours are offset from each other generally, I don't think it's a problem. Because we want less.
That's kind of a staff and DRC comment, that would be.
I think that's worth looking into. We really do want to limit points of access, for sure, though, that's, there's no question about that.
Right, especially on Main and that gap.
And with.
I don't know where else you'd put it on Main going through there.
With South Lane being closed off, there's going to eliminate a lot of that coming through there.
We had looked at purchasing the property from Ashley as well, the home, and it didn't make sense to put that back access, if that lane's going to be closed off.
Because then they're going through Voluntary Drive, which is the new subdivision, so.
Right, okay. Any other feedback to give them?
My feedback would be, I like the idea, even if it is, we do our best job with language that allows for the planning commission and city council to contemplate on a case-by-case basis variances to commercial or other zoning that abuts a residence, a, a non-conforming residence, or a zone, even a zoned residential. I feel like it's the planning commission and city council's job to do some of the harder things, which is, this would be one of the harder things. And that's why we're here, is to try and honor the property rights that these people are trying to exercise, while also honoring the property rights of the neighbors, so that they all play well together. I think that's our job, and sometimes it's more difficult than other times, but I think, I think we should give it a go, try for it. And as far as this concept, I, I believe we can make something work with extra wall heights, not necessarily that setback, with, I think that potentially this is workable.
I guess my other comment too is, if you're putting this business here, they're, if they put up a masonry wall, are you boxing, if South, then if South Lane is going to close, are you boxing them out of potential development? I mean, what are we doing to the, that property owner?
To the north, you're saying.
To the east. Am I looking at it wrong? I must be looking at it.
So, all three homes to the east on South Lane will now have to have different access, unless they're coming through a commercial parking lot.
Right, and that's what I mean. Are we limiting their, are we limiting their potential to sell to someone who wants to develop commercially? I guess.
South Lane will always exist as long as those homes exist. So, the homes would have to go away before those, that access would go away.
Right, yeah.
A couple other points of feedback would be, I think on cases like this, the neighbors who are affected, having their feedback is really important, I think, to make a decision. And then, also something that would help this particular site's applications, potential success would be having the property to the north zoned commercial would be really meaningful. Would be another, some more feedback.
I like that part, I want to know what the neighbors want to say, but 25 feet does seem big. So, I think like we talked about, if it's shorter and some fencing, I think that'd make it work.
I think we have heard some things that I would call maybe marching orders for staff, by way of things to explore, and for the applicants reaching out to their neighbors about a zone change application. And we can certainly help get the ball rolling on that, consent is the key, I think, there.
And the feedback from the neighbors at the east would be really helpful.
So, the neighbors to the east is Ashley, she owns that property.
And what's her feedback?
One of the.
Right, so I don't, I don't know, like.
The Hankses are boxed in by her property, so we're just a little square of hers. So, I can, I would love to, I mean, I can talk to him, but he's, he's been very amicable to help with everything, but.
He's been what, sorry?
Very, he's happy to help with everything, he's, he loves Ashley.
Ashley owns River Bridge. She owns River Bridge.
The owner of River Bridge owns.
Yeah, Ashley owns River Bridge.
And she also lives right there?
Nope, she owns that home, it's a rental property.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, the, the only neighboring person who lives there, the Hanks family, you know, he's been really willing to work with her, so, but I'm happy to talk to him.
That's the one she owns, is rental, right?
Yeah, she does.
And this is the.
The zone change process would involve public hearings, both with you and the city council, so there would be that forum.
Those homes are already zoned commercial, correct?
They are, yeah.
They're a commercial mixed-use above.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Charles, I'm going to go for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yeah, we're here at your disposal, anything you guys want to talk about, we're game, but we're done.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.